Be it resolved, Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in the open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position on negotiating strategies of the public body. The item under that is old Blacksburg Middle School property. Here are the items to be discussed: Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific offices, appointees, or employees of any public body. First item is adjustment to the appeals board, Montgomery Regional Economic Development Commission, New River Valley Economic Development Alliance, Planning Commission, and Board of Zoning Appeals. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Creese?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
I.
Mr. Bray?
Be it resolved, Board of Supervisors enters a closed meeting to return to regular meeting. So moved. Motion? Second? Have a motion in a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Hi. Ow! I can't say aye. Sorry. Excuse me. I just have to say abstain.
We're coming out of work session.
Oh, work session.
You're voting to come out of closed session.
Closed session. Well, I wasn't in there.
Yeah, but you voted to come out, but when it comes to certification, is that when?
Oh, oh, Lord. I think I'm a little behind today. I don't know what it is, but I'll say yes.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Mr. Creese?
Aye.
No, Bray.
Aye.
Six aye.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting or heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creese?
Abstain. I was not there. Thank you.
Mr. Bray?
Aye.
Aye, so abstain.
Now, the next item on our agenda is the invocation, and the way we recognize our invocation is we observe a moment of silence, and we do ask that you keep our chair who is ill in your thoughts. And then we'll be led by the pledge allegiance by Mr. Meadows.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Once again, our Chair, Mr. Pelletis, is under the weather, and he's ill, and he's not with us tonight. Our next item on the agenda is public hearings. The following public hearings were appetized pursuant to law in the Bird section of the Run-up Times on September 26, October 3, and October 10 of 2013. And I guess our first hearing will be on the Shaw Development.
I'd like to add to... Don't I have to do it up front?
Or you can do it under addendum if it's something you want us to do.
Yes, I was gonna... You... I was gonna...
Do it.
You want to do it on the addendum? We can add it to the addendum.
Okay.
That's what I had noted. Is it to do with Shaw?
With Shaw.
I think it would be more appropriate to bring it up now, so that way everybody knows exactly what you're planning on bringing up in the Board reports. That makes sense to me.
That's what I thought we voted on last meeting. And... Can I go?
Yeah.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. And it's a public hearing on the Shaw investments, and the request is that if there's no one here that speaks against that, that we may go ahead and go forward tonight rather than have them wait two, three more weeks to get going and building something. So that would be...
What you're saying, Mr. Creese, going as public hearing, if there's no opposition, you'd like to go forward?
No, there's no opposition.
No opposition. Okay.
We will make sure that's added under consent agenda.
Yeah, okay.
Good evening. Vice Chair Bray. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, thank you. Tonight, we're going to discuss this application submitted by Shaw Development for a design at the property located at 5201 Tango Lane. Most of us know this property as the former Elston LaFayette Elementary School site. It's located in the Shawsville Magisterial District D, and there's some adjacent properties zoned agricultural A1, a few zoned general business, and a couple of properties zoned residential R3 in this area, which shows on the map in just a moment. The vicinity map shows that the proposed site is in the eastern portion of the county on Run-up Road. This is a zoning map. So this property is located in... Excuse me. Identified by the yellow line is the property in question. It's about eight acres. Just to orient you a little bit, Run-up Road Route 11460 is in this area here. This is Norfolk Road coming off of 460, and then it intersects with Old Run-up Road in this area here. And then this is the railroad on the backside of the site. Tango Lane also comes in here to serve the school property as well. So the orange depicts a general business zone. You can see we have several properties in that general business district. We have some residential R2, and the yellow is residential R3 here. There's a small... A few lots zoned R3 as well across the road. This striped lot shows that we have a special use permit for contractors' storage yard adjacent to this property. Here's our aerial map. We can see the remnants of the school on this photograph as well. And again, you can see better now 460, Old Run-up Road, and the railroad in this area. So the applicant is requesting rezoning of about eight acres from A1 to residential multifamily RM1 to allow 64 residential townhomes to be located on individual lots. They will be constructed of a modular type design, and they will be sold and or leased based on the market demand. If the market is such that they cannot sell the first few, they will probably lease those, and that will project how quickly they build the others, I'm sure. So we'll talk about impacts now. So on Route 11460 of Run-up Road, BDOT has issued a letter stating that the proposed right-in, right-out entrance to 460 could be permitted based on the concept plans that you have in your package this evening. The owner can request the closure of Tango Lane if we want to go through the abandonment Infrastructure. We have a letter from the PSA stating that both water and public sewer can be provided to this site. This property discharges into the Elston LaFayette Regional Wastewater Collection and Treatment System. Whoever came up with the name of that, I'll be congratulating. Therefore, what's unique to this system, and I haven't realized before, is that there will be a septic tank required to be installed on each lot for each unit to hold the solids, and these will require individual pumping periodically. But that is something that's generally known with this area, and it's perfectly fine with the Public Service Authority Director. So the owners have proffered this site to be served by public utilities, water and sewer. Now, talk about schools. Obviously, this property is located in the Shawsville strand, and Montgomery County's schools have sent us a letter stating that, based on their calculations, the addition of the 64 townhome units could produce approximately 37 students or three students per grade level. Basically, the only school in the area that will be really impacted by that is the middle school, because it's very near capacity at this point. Emergency services, the director advised he has no concerns regarding this project. The concept plan indicates we're going to have three new fire hydrants in this area, and there will be one existing hydrant relocated for a total of four hydrants to serve this eight-acre parcel. And now we'll identify some features of the comprehensive plan. The property is designated as village expansion and further described as mixed use within the Elston LaFayette Village Plan. The Route 11460 corridor plan also identifies this property to be in the area identified as the scenic eastern gateway. And there are a few little things that have to be done in the site plan stage for that. So the property lies, again, in the village transfer link... Excuse me. The village transportation links area as well. So we have a lot of plans for the growth of this area. This is the 2025 comprehensive plan map. Again, we show you this proposed site identified in the yellow line here. You can see that it's lying in this area in the purple, and the Board has changed the comprehensive plan designation just recently to a mixed-use designation for this little area here. Basically, we can have residential, commercial, and industrial opportunities here now in this vicinity. So the mixed-use development allows, like I said, for all those things, industrial, commercial, residential, and it's based on the individual features of each property as they are coming to us for rezoning, and also the infrastructure that's available to each individual piece of property, so that you can decide what's appropriate and what isn't as you review these rezonings at close. Now, village plan encourages a real broad range of housing options to give a whole lot of different looks to the area. You know, it can be single-family homes, can be townhomes, can be apartments and that sort of thing. Mixed-use development means that we could be mixing commercial development in with some residential development, those types of ideas. The village plan requires maintaining the existing character of the area. We have a beautiful area in this vicinity, and we want to keep it that way. We only want to improve it. It also encourages interconnectivity of roadways and bikeways and walkway networks as well. So the Route 11460 corridor plan, I'll give you a few features of that plan now. It encourages formal landscaping along the corridor with a mixture of ornamental trees, irregular type group, it's not just little soldier trees, you know, straight line, evergreen shrubs, to beautify the areas that are being developed on the Route 11460 corridor. The building designs should be compatible with the rural quality of the area as well. We have a lot of farms, and the scenery there should be maintained as well. So another issue is consolidated entrances for the parcels along 460. And that would be to comply with VDOT's access management standards now that they have in place. It changed in the recent years to be a little bit more significant. The vibe plan considerations, we want to make sure that we have our proposed trail connecting the two villages in the Run-up County. So that's been in the planning for some number of years. We have a proposed trail network bordering this property along 0460, crossing the bridge, and continuing along Route 460. So obviously, with this rezoning, we would get a significant land change for this parcel. We had a school. Now, it will be going to 64 possible townhome units. The concept for the development does meet the county's goal for providing this broader range of housing options for this area of the county. This development is located very near the industrial parks, so there is already infrastructure in place to support this kind of development as well. So now we have your concept plan as provided by Gay and Neil, who has prepared the package for the applicant. We'll try to review a few of the features on this plan, and then we have David Hagan representing the owner, and we have John Neal here to represent Gay and Neil, and they may be making some comments to you as well. So the orientation here is... To the bottom of the page is north. So Route 11460 here is along the bottom, as we can see. Then we have the railroad up here. And so Gay and Neil's proposing a right-in, right-out entrance into the property from Route 460. And in the black, obviously, is the travel ways along inside the development. It'll provide the right-of-way to come and go to these individual lots. And you can see, based on the lines here, this is the individual parking along in front of each building. The reddish-brown feature here are the townhomes proposed, and you can see the lot lines, basically, they're on... Each unit will be on its own lot that can be sold separately. So the zoning ordinance requires a minimum grouping of three townhomes and a maximum grouping of eight townhomes. So that's the largest cluster you could have. This plan shows a top lot for recreational uses, for playground equipment, that sort of thing. It shows the basketball court here. This was the court that was in use with the school site. It will be repaved and rehabilitated to provide additional recreation area for the folks living here. Also, this is the stormwater management area here. This little pond showing that feature. You can see that, based on the reviews by the Planning Commission and the discussions by staff, the applicant is proposing a double row of screening trees along both sides of the property here and here. These trees are not to be more than 25% of one species, that's in case disease sets in and maybe it shouldn't get everything at once. So there is a second access to a state road, and it's in this area here. You'll come out onto Old Route 460. There will be a hammerhead turnaround in this area for school buses and that sort of thing. There is some potential that maybe this owner may join with the owner across the street here and try to abandon this portion of the state right-of-way. If that is successful, the applicant has suggested that they may do a cul-de-sac point there. But otherwise, we will have a hammerhead-type turnaround here. So I believe that is the main features we wanted to talk about in this area. So we give you some elevation views submitted by the applicant, that this is the type of project they're looking to build, can be a combination of vinyl, brick, rock, and that sort of thing. But this was the elevation view submitted. This picture on the bottom here is a project that has been built in the past by Shaw Development, and it's off of Run-up Street behind the food line up here, very close to the government center here. So we get down to the announcements section. Shaw Development and Gay and Neil have voluntarily held a community meeting on September 30 at the Elston Fire Station. We had a good turnout. There was around 20, 22 people there. There were a lot of discussion, and I think it was helpful to the owner and the engineer to formulate their plans. We gave you a letter of support from Winston and Margaret Dubai, and also an email in your package as well from Leo Stevens. We got this email after the Planning Commission public hearing. He had concerns regarding lighting and pervious surfaces, interconnectivity, and elevation views. As usual, we would ask you to be considerate of any comments presented this evening by adjacent property owners or other interested citizens. The Commission has recommended this for approval. They met on October 9 and discussed the concerns of wanting a mix of architectural styles within the development. They were very concerned about safety options for school bus access. There was a lot of discussion on that. And future connectivity options with adjoining properties. And that's one thing I failed to point out to you on your map. Those two sides that had the double rolled trees, there's proposed areas that can be connected to adjacent properties for further development and interconnectivity between the properties. It also provides a place for fire equipment turning around within the development if there's a fire. So we had four members of the public who spoke at the hearing, two of which were concerned for the safety of the schoolchildren within the project. And so by a vote of seven to zero, with 15 proffered conditions, the Planning Commission recommended approval for the project. So I will not read these 15 proffered. They're very long, but they talk about proffering this concept plan that you just saw that will be required, a maximum density of no more than eight units per acre, connection to public utilities, site plan to be approved based on our site plan review, and there'll be some additional landscaping features required as well. So road... The road required road improvements, recreational areas, connectivity of the trails, and so forth. Now, if you have any questions for me, I'll try to answer those, and then, like I said, we do have the engineer here to represent the applicant, and the applicant is...
Any questions from the Board members?
I might add something to when you started. You were talking about the septic system and safety plans. I'm fairly familiar with what goes on there with... And yes, you do have to have a septic tank that they will fill as needed. And the reason for having to have that is the lines are smaller.
Okay.
It doesn't allow... That's the reason that the schools down there have what they call a chop plant type thing that reduces that down to smaller...
Some sort of grinder or something?
Obstacle, and it will flow then. But beyond that, the lines are just smaller, and of course, there are no lines as we know them in a septic system.
No field lines?
No, no field lines with gravel in them to take the flow. And this does it very, very well, and everybody seems to be fine with it once they get it in there. It costs a little money to put it in.
So it's my understanding the tanks will hold the solids, and the liquids will proceed on them?
Correct. Liquids would be just like your field lines. It's the purpose of them, and they work very much.
Right. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. I saw in here, then I saw in the image as well, the Gay and Neil designed image, about the walking trails that surround the property as well.
Yes, sir.
I believe it said that there would be walking trails on three sides of the property that would connect up to a sidewalk on the fourth. Is that correct?
The walking trail, yes. The walking trail is shown here on Old Route 11. As you come off, it comes right around this area here and proceeds right on around. They did adjust the location of that a little bit to get that second row of trees in here, come right on around. As you can see, right now, it's proposed to be off the property on the BDOT area. So they're thinking that may get abandoned, and Shaw Development will have ownership of it if it does not. We, as staff, feel like this walking trail will be easily adjusted to come right through here and connect in to the sidewalks here as it would have originally. So the sidewalk is going to be on this side.
Okay. Are there... And I don't know the adjoining properties. Are there other walking trails around there that this could be connected to, or are there future ideas? And I'm thinking about the village plan, which does emphasize other modes of transportation, such as biking and walking.
Well, I think as part of the trail plans, there was some discussion about using this old bridge that the county now has agreed to maintain as part of that connection to the trail lines. Not positive how that's going to work out. There will need to be some future discussion of that. But it does provide a good opportunity to cause that to happen if things go favorably.
So if that section of Old 460 right there is abandoned, and the developers decide to put a cul-de-sac in there, for example, is there a possibility of putting in a connector out across that bridge that the county's decided to maintain?
I don't have quite as much information on that as I should. I'm thinking there should be some ways to work that out, but I won't commit to that at this point unless someone else has some more information. Do you have anything further, Bray? Maybe the engineers could speak to that one here.
You know, let me say something about that. And I don't know whether... I haven't talked to anybody. I don't know whether anybody likes it or doesn't like it. But I have been told that that little bridge that they come across over the railroad track is where all the drugs down there are coming from. They buy them on one side of the track, and run back and sell them on the other side. So it may have to stop right there where it's at. I don't know. Or it may not. But if I were voting today, I would not vote to put that bridge across that railroad track.
You would not vote to make that a part of the trail? You'd vote to close the connection?
No. I'd rather have it just go around in a circle, let my people get some exercise. But that... And what I've talked... I've talked to law enforcement officers and different people that tell me that that's just not... They like the territory, not away from it.
It is a part of a couple of our plans, though, for this area. So we would need to, as a county, take a look at those plans and readjust those plans if that's the way the Board feels.
And I guess if you could get it to where that they had some people there to make sure that the things I was talking about doesn't happen, then that would be fine. But that would be something that actually the county would have to do.
My concern's simply about connectivity to other parcels.
Yes, sir. And that's what we're striving for as well, with all of our plans that we have in place. That is our goal, is to try to keep these things connected where we can continue to connect all the way to Run-up.
Sure. Yeah. And then, maybe we can hear a little bit more from the developer in a minute. The other question I had, I don't know if this might be better for a question for them as well, is that Mr. Stevens' email about concerns was about the exterior lighting. And I wanted to know if they were thinking about addressing that as well in their exterior features?
We have communicated with the developer and advised them that they will need to be anticipating the type of lighting and those sorts of things that will be presented in the site plan. They will be required to submit a lighting plan that's required in all these types of plans so that the light doesn't bleed out. They will usually use a downward directed light so that it doesn't broadcast up to the sky and to the adjacent properties as so much.
Yeah, okay.
So that will all come in under site plan review.
Okay. Two questions for you, Lee.
Yes, sir.
The right-in, is that the access for the school bus to go in on the half of 460 and...
If I understood the last conversation, the school buses will come in on Old 460. If I understood the last conversation, the school buses will come in on Old 460.
Old 460?
Yeah, they will not proceed across the private property of this development. They'd have to come in on the state road.
Okay. The roads within the development, are they private?
Yes.
Okay. Do they have snow removal? It's been taken care of?
There will be a homeowners association that will be set up to have to take care of all of that, maintenance of all the areas there.
Okay. Any other questions? I guess we can open it up for the public here.
Thank you, sir.
Are the agents, the agents?
Yeah, we'll let the, yeah, agents speak first, and then we'll open it up to the public.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Rutledge. I'm a project manager of Shaw Development, excuse me. And I'm really excited to be here tonight. We think we've got a wonderful project and I just want to take a second. I'll turn the technical stuff over to Mr. Neal and Gayne Neal. This has been an absolutely wonderful project and part of the reason is, is the planning commission, the board with the future land use designation change, with all the staff, all the different departments and everything, but really the homeowners, they've made a big difference in this project itself. We've incorporated a lot of their ideas, a lot of their wants, a lot of their wishes into the overall design. We had a good turnout. We had a voluntary meeting at the Elston LaFayette Fire Station. There were 20 some people there in attendance and, you know, everybody was not excited about it. But I think a lot of people that didn't know much about it after that meeting were. And they come up with some good ideas and stuff. And I just think it's a great design and I want to thank everybody for their time, effort, and energy. One key point that I wanted to touch base on was that we've done a number of these townhome developments within the New River Valley and we have found that the only way to successfully manage these projects is with a homeowners association. That association would be responsible for the snow removal, the maintenance of the parking areas, the exterior of the buildings, the cleaning, the cleansing of everything, the mowing. You know, you would see developments where they don't have a homeowners association and you have five yards that are immaculate, two that never get mowed, three that, you know, are just jumped up. So, we try to take into account all of that in all of our developments. The septic tanks, they will be maintained by the homeowners association as well. So, people will pay a monthly due to this to take care of the exterior maintenance, to take care of the parking lots, take care of the snow removal, pump up the septic tanks so that it doesn't become a financial burden for somebody when they end up having to pay $500 to have a tank pumped or come up with their fair share of the snow. They pay a nominal fee every month that comes on that. I know we've talked a lot about the right-of-way vacation. We've talked to the adjacent property owners. I didn't really want to get into it tonight, but I just want to touch on briefly. Everything that we have shown on this conceptual plan can be done without any right-of-way vacations. So, it's not contingent upon any of that. What we would do if we actually vacated some of these right-of-ways, it would allow us to tweak our design. Instead of having a long Old 460, instead of having a hammerhead turnaround, we would have the group actually construct a cul-de-sac. I think the property owner to the south of us has some business plans or some business uses that he's going to expand upon on his property. Everybody on our side of the road wants the bridge closed. You talked about vacating the right-of-way again. We can do everything without it. But what we talked to staff about is should VDOT allow us to vacate that public right-of-way? Typically, I think half of the property diverts to the adjacent property owner and the other half to the other adjacent property owner. Well, what we would do, we would keep an easement. At some time as that plan is vacated, that right-of-way is vacated, we would dedicate an easement if that vital leak, if that trail ever come through there. So, we would make sure that the easement was in place for that trail should it ever be built. Also, this area right here, probably show it better on your copy, but that is a future connection that we have allowed for to tie this trail should it ever be constructed into ours as well. So, it would become a loop. So, we've taken all that into account. And again, I just want to thank staff, school board, emergency services, everybody for all their time, effort, and energy. They've spent a lot of time on it. We've made a lot of revisions. We've got a couple of turnarounds in here for the fire department. They can also use to extend those to adjacent property owners should they ever be developed at a future date as well. And with that being said, if you don't have any questions for me, I'll turn it over to Mr. Neal.
Any questions from board members? No.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, need to get Tom to speak more often. He doesn't come to Mr. Neal very often. Certainly appreciate that. I just wanted to touch on a couple of the key things specifically in the proffers that I wanted to point out, make sure that we all understood and knew what was happening. As part of the proffers, the very first one says that the property shall be developed in substantial performance with the conceptual plan. So, this plan that you see before you tonight, that is what will be built, is proffered as part of this process. So, I want to make sure that we are all clear on that. And then also, the density, the village plan, I think allows for potentially up to 12 units per acre, but we're proffering only eight units per acre. It felt like that ended up being a better development for the area. The landscape, we proffered to make sure that we're in conformance and our proffer backs that up, being in conformance with the LaFayette area plan and the frontage plan so that we do have an attractive corridor throughout the Elston area. We also proffered the bus shelter. And one of the things that we did with that in working with the school and working with the county staff, because there's some of that opportunity for some of the right-of-way to be vacated, we've allowed that bus shelter to have some flexibility to be located, coordinating with the county schools and potentially even down the road, possibly a Smart Way bus stop or something that's coming from Roanoke to Christusburg, New River Valley. So, we might be able to take advantage of that and this area might also be able to take advantage of it. And then, last but not least, the trails and the recreation amenities that we have shown on here, we think they fit pretty good for the demographic that we're looking at, where we're thinking about that we might be able to have a two-income couple where one's going to Roanoke and one's going to the New River Valley. This would be an ideal spot for both of those folks to travel hackway. So, I wanted to touch on those proffers.
What was it?
And then also, we did proffer as part of the architectural design, a mixture of brick, stone, vinyl siding materials shall be utilized in the construction of the townhomes to provide a diverse look between the units. That's one of the things that was one of the concerns that was brought up. And if I can for just a second, the two on the upper are what we provided and there it showed the one that was built. I think that was constructed in 2000. Is that right, Tom? So, just wanted, you know, we've evolved as part of the product that we're producing. So, I just didn't want you to think that what we're producing in 2000, not carried that all the way through to 2013. We're evolving and coming up with better designs and better looks for the product. I also wanted to touch on from a transportation standpoint, one of the things that you may ask yourself, why is this road in such a curve that it is? And there was a pretty healthy discussion at the planning commission about why that was. I don't know if you can see there, we've got that curve. One of the reasons that we did that, working with VDOT to put the right-in, right-out onto 460, but we also placed it there to protect, and there's an entrance off of the page here for this property right here, to protect their potential future value of the property for a commercial entrance. We've set that entrance so that it is the proper distance away from that entrance as well as this property right here, which is the only property in this group on this side that has an entrance on the 460. So, we've met the distance standards to protect their future potential entrances to their property. So, that's one of the reasons for that. The other reason is, is that we certainly don't want a drag strip in our neighborhood. We do are providing from a transportation perspective, connectivity all the way through to Old 460, whereas right now, there's only one entrance, the North Fork Road for all these properties back here. So, we are providing a second entrance should there ever be a major emergency or something like that, that would require, that had Old 460 slash North Fork Road block that you could come in through this route. But we certainly don't want it to be a drag strip cut through where we were thinking about the protection of our residents as well as our neighbors. And last but not least, we really feel like this could be an economic driver for this entire area. As Tom said, we worked with all of our adjacent property owners and if you recall, you voted on and designated this entire area as a mixed-use area. And so, we think that this project, because of its size, is going to be able to potentially put some attractiveness onto these other properties. And certainly, some of those folks might want to get together and think about adding the retail or commercial component of that mixed-use. But we think probably the first thing that needs to come is the housing of the residents so that that business might have some business during the day and on the weekends and at nights. There's a substantial amount of traffic on 460, but at the same time, it'd be nice to have some customers right beside you if you were opening up a laundromat or a convenience store, dentist office, or whatever the case may be. And I just wanted to wrap up. As Tom said, it's been a tremendous process. We really worked well with our neighbors and staff and everyone and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Also have Mr. Hagan who signed up to speak. Okay. Now, we're opening it up to the public. If anyone would like to speak on this public hearing, please come forward to the podium. State your name and address and you have five minutes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Clark Woods. I'm a co-owner of the, me and my wife, co-owners of this property in here across the road. I think what Mr. Hagan, his group is doing is beneficial to the area. My concern is that we purchased this business over here, purchased the old, what used to be the Matts Oil Company and later became the Martin Oil Company. We purchased it with intentions of continuing in the oil business. And I would want to make sure that nothing in here hindered that in our case. And concerning this bridge here, we're having a lot of vandalism crossing that bridge, coming down and putting graffiti all over our storage units, our buildings. And not only that, but they're breaking into our storage units. And talking with the law and everything, there's a lot of drug. Right now, vehicles are coming in, parking here, a lot of foot traffic coming out from this area over in here, coming across, purchasing drugs and walking back. And so, my concern is just do away with this bridge. I think it'd be beneficial in talking with all of the residential owners over here. Their concerns are the same. A house got broken into right in this area down here and the owner was gone, out of town, and they just completely wiped him out. And there was no vehicle seen during that night from any residents. So, from all indications, it was foot traffic that done it. Thank you very much.
Sir, I don't think you gave your address. Your address?
My address?
Yes.
It's this property right in here.
Your Melon address or your address where you live?
Where I live is 378 Carolina Road in Charlottesville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What was his name?
Clark Woods.
Okay.
Is it anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this public hearing tonight? Okay. Okay.
Tom Rutledge, Shaw Development. Just in closing, one thing I didn't address while I was up here was the email that come from the gentleman about the lighting. Typically, what we do, and I'll defer to Mr. Neal on this in the design plans, but typically in developments like this, we've actually put a post light at the end, at the end of the sidewalk for each unit. That post light is also on a photocell. So, every one of those post lights are on from dusk till dawn. Typically, we haven't liked the taller streetlights look. We like the look and it's more security and more safe, safety we feel. So, that's what we're doing as far as the lighting. I think one of Mr. Hagan's main reasons is the board purchasing this property and developing this property was too, was centered and located between Christusburg and Roanoke County Salem and also with the amount of money that's getting ready to be spent on upgrading North Fork Road for easy access to Interstate 81. We just feel it's a prime location. We hope it's a good thing for the county and we hope it's a good thing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, seeing the one coming forward, we'll close this public hearing on the Shaw Development. The next one's, I think we'll take one at a time.
Mr. Chairman, I think the staff's going to give one presentation.
On all of them?
But then, we got to open each public hearing usually after the presentation.
Okay. I thought she's going to have to get up several times.
See, you're reducing the exercise. We do have three agricultural forestal districts for renewal this year. I will go through each one and take questions on each one individually, but I'll go through all three of them up here. The first is Agricultural Forestal District Number Seven. It's the Wilson Den Creek District. It's located in the central portion of Montgomery County around Ellett Road and Denhill Road. It's originally established in 1981 and like all the ones we're going to hear this evening, they were last renewed in 2005. Currently, it has nine property owners and consists of approximately 2,564.1 acres. One property owner has proposed in a large addition of 298 acres. So, the total for the next eight-year term, if approved, would be 2,862.9 acres. This is the map of AFD Seven. The dark green is what is existing along with the pink. The pink indicates we did not receive a response from that property owner. To orient you, this right here is the proposed smart road that bisects the Agricultural Forestal District. This up through here is Denhill and this is Ellett Road. And these yellow pieces are additions that are proposed. The AFD Committee and the Planning Commission have reviewed them. They both voted to recommend approval of the renewal and the addition for another eight-year term. The total acreage upon that renewal would be 2,862.9118 acres and would consist of 25 parcels. They also stated that they would like to give the property owners until December 31st of 2014 to file their plans that are required per the county code. And I'll take any questions on AFD Seven now.
Okay. No questions.
Okay. The second is Agricultural Forestal District Number Nine. It's Elston Pedlar Hills and it's located in the eastern portion of Montgomery County. It's in the vicinity of Roanoke Road and Seneca Hollow. It currently consists of 18 property owners and 4,792 acres. We have had one addition of three acres proposed. Two property owners have requested withdrawal. That's about 150 acres that they've requested to remove. There were two small properties, and by small, I mean less than a quarter of an acre, owned by individuals that had no other property within the district. So, due to that, the inability to be utilized for agricultural forestal purposes and the lack of the owner's response during renewal, staff recommended that those be removed from that agricultural district. With the proposed changes, the total acreage would be 4,688.117. And this is the map of AFD Nine. Those two small properties, you can't even see because they're so little, so they're hard to point out, but there's one right in this area and I believe the other is over in here somewhere. This is the property to be withdrawn, this orange piece here and here. This is Roanoke Road, Seneca Hollow, and this, of course, is Interstate 81. And then, the properties in pink, we did not receive a response from those property owners. So, they will automatically be renewed. so they will automatically be renewed. The AFD Committee and Planning Commission voted to recommend approval. The total acreage would be 4,688.117. Again, property owners that do not have plans on file will be given until December 31st of 2014 to comply with those requirements. There are a couple of outlier parcels, meaning they do not fall within the buffer yard, so we do recommend that they be included for their agricultural and forestal significance to Montgomery County. Any questions on AFD nine?
No questions. Move on.
That's good. The last one is Agricultural Forestal District Number Ten. It's located in the northern portion, east of the town of Blacksburg. It's around Mount Taver Road and Bishop Road. It currently consists of 10 owners and 893.95 acres. When we looked at this, several parcels fell outside the one-mile boundary and core area. So we started looking at the comparison with a nearby district, Agricultural Forestal District Two, known as Catawba. And we played with it on the maps a little bit, and if we combined the two districts, we noticed that it made one huge district with no outlined parcels. The AFD Two District was renewed two years ago. So if we combine and create one contiguous district, AFD Ten would need to be renewed for a period of six years versus eight. And this is a map to try to illustrate. AFD Ten is in the blue, and these parcels were all outliers. AFD Two is in the olive-green color. So once you combine them, you created a contiguous core that's noted by the orange outlined area, and then that increased the buffer, which led to no outliers for AFD Ten. It makes a stronger AFD district because as AFD Ten existed, if you had a property owner who owns the majority of this section up here, which was the core, pull out, then that district would have to be terminated because it would not have a core. If it's combined with AFD Two, you can see how large the core becomes, so it would take several property owners to drop out before that district would have to be terminated. So the Commission and the Planning Commission, the AFD Committee both reviewed that, and they recommended renewing the AFD Ten parcels, which is 28 parcels, totaling 915 acres, for a period of six years, and thus that would terminate the AFD Ten district, combine it with AFD Two, to create one contiguous district. The total acreage in the revised AFD Two would be 6,758.38 acres, and it would involve 52 parcels with no outliers. Again, property owners would be given until December 31st, 2014, to comply with plan requirements. Do you have any questions on that?
Seeing no questions. Thank you. Now, we'll open this up for public comment. We're going to do AFD District Seven first, and if you'd like to speak publicly on this, please come forward, state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to AFD District Nine. If anyone would like to speak publicly on this public hearing, please come forward to the mic. You have five minutes to speak. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to AFD District Ten for public comment. If anyone would like to speak to this hearing, please come forward and state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, we will close that public hearing. And I guess the next thing on our agenda is public com, public address. If anyone here who would like to address the board tonight at this public hearing on anything having to do with county business, please come forward, speak in the mic, and you have five minutes to speak. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to our addenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have two addendums. We have an addition to consent agenda for fire and rescue operating equipment carryover. This is funds that were carried over from last year. Then we also have the request from earlier from Supervisor Creed to consider a vote on the Shaw development proposal from the public hearing.
Okay, I guess we'll deal with, we'll need to take action on these now, right? Can they, can they?
We can do it separately or together.
And they'll just be added to the?
Just added to the agenda.
Okay.
Do you have a motion to?
So moved.
So move, all right, did you move to add both?
Both together.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. Clark, call the role, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Hi.
Mr. Creed?
Hi.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Can I make a suggestion here? I don't know if this is appropriate, but in the future, is there a way that we could rearrange the agendas so that addenda, the addendum come first so that, because that seems to be the place where we need to add things to the?
Before the public hearing.
To the agenda, so before public comment, before public hearing, so that people know ahead of time, so that in a situation like today, Mr. Creed could indeed add that to the agenda before?
Sure.
We go on.
Sure. I don't think there's any parliamentary procedure that would require.
We'll put it up at a pub. At every.
Right. Just right after we come out of closed meetings.
Be glad to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, where are we? We're at the consent agenda. Have a.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And that is the consent agenda with the item added from the addenda.
Right. Okay. Would the clerk please call the role?
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Mr. Brown? May I say, I think the Social Services Director and Board would like to know right away about this appointment, so if you would?
We'll notify. I'll either send them an email later tonight or call them first thing in the morning.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I guess, poll business. Subject: Emergency Operations Plan. Resolution Adopting the Montgomery County Emergency Operations Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Would the clerk please call the role?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Subject B: Resolution Establishing Montgomery County Priorities for FY 2015 through 2020. D dot six-year road improvement plan for interstate and primary roads.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the role?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Schedule Public Hearing with the intent to abandon a portion of Elliott Creek Road.
And Mr. Chair, I would point out that tonight, this is just a request to schedule a public hearing for discussion on this matter. No decisions being made tonight on this issue. I do know there's some public interest in this, but I've conveyed that all the board would be doing tonight is scheduling a public hearing.
Let me just add, the resolution does say that it's the board's intent to take action later to possibly close that.
Right.
So it's, you're right.
Right. Okay. Do I have a?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Nope. Would the clerk please call the role?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Subject B: League of Women Voters Transfer From General Contingencies of Balance in General Contingencies Before Approval of This Resolution is?
So moved.
370. Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the role?
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Now, do we deal with these other two items before we go into work session?
Yes, well, we dealt with one.
No, dealt with one, but consent, then we need to deal with Mr. Creed's.
Yes.
You ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would move that we vote on Shaw Development and bring that forward because, you know, there's no one here speaking against it, and hasn't been the last time here either, so it looks like something that we actually need in Jolvet Wells to marry. You know, I had, I've had two calls. Won't know how much they are, when can I get one? So, you know, if I got two calls, I'm sure they call a whole lot of other people. They're from probably who had to be ringing quite often, so, you know, people are excited. There hasn't been a development down there that normal, everyday working people should purchase since I don't know when. Actually, I don't know when there ever was one. So it's something that is desperately needed, and it's like a real good layout for it.
That's in the form of a motion, right?
No, motion.
Okay. Have a motion?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, what we're voting on is an ordinance approving the rezoning of that property, conditioned upon the 15 conditions in the rezon, in the ordinance as well. So we're actually doing an ordinance, not a resolution.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Is it any further discussion?
I just want to say, I think it's a great location for exactly what they were talking about, because there are a lot of people that have split families going to the Roanoke and the New River Valleys. I think that would be perfect. And with that road coming in from the interstate, I think it would be really good. I do want to note, is there any way, which is aside from this, that we can get an update about the problem they're having down there with the break-ins and the drugs? Because I don't like that idea very much. You know, because this sounds like a great development going in, and it sounds like maybe that could be looked into some way.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Would the clerk please call the role?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Okay, next item. Into work session. Be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enter into work session for the purpose of discussing the transition public service authority to a county department. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please call the role.
Ms. Fitts?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Please consider it in work session.
Mr. Chair, this is an item that has been discussed several times in recent months, and the Board, the PSA Board, had passed a resolution several months ago recommending to the Board of Supervisors that this matter be discussed further. And this evening, we were asked to place this back on the agenda to allow for further discussion by Board members regarding the PSA's possible conversion to a county department. So with that introduction, it's basically an opportunity for Board members to share their thoughts and concerns tonight, so.
Can I ask just an informational question? So what, if this Board decided to proceed, what would be the process that would be involved?
I think legally, the next step would be a resolution would be placed on a future Board agenda concurring with the request of the PSA. And you'd basically be agreeing to take over the water and sewer operations of the PSA. You'd be agreeing to accept all the assets of the PSA in return for taking on the liabilities of the PSA. So it'd be a wash there, so you'd be taking over the debt. You'd also be moving forward to winding down the operations of the PSA, which would take a little bit of time. Then we got to go to the SEC and get everything transferred from the PSA to the county and run in the water and sewer. It's not very hard, just got to do it. And then you'd eventually close down that authority as a corporation, as a public county.
And one of the things wouldn't we want to do is get the legislature to change the code?
Yeah.
Because otherwise, we would, if this development decided not to hook up to the PSA and have their own private water source, the county would not be able to force them. I'm just using you guys as examples, would not be able to force them to hook up to the sewer.
Well, in this case, you have zoning power to require that, but if you didn't have zoning power, if it was an existing use or by right use, yeah, you wouldn't be able to require that to hook up the public water and sewer.
So if it was an R4 residential use and somebody made a subdivision, we wouldn't be, so we need to get that done.
Right, and that request is on. Currently, you guys approve putting that on our legislative agenda, and we will be approaching or have already approached the legislators to introduce a bill to add us to the list of giving the county the authority to have mandatory connection. And that mandatory connection would be limited to instances where it's new, new construction or new water sewer, or if water, like wells go bad, you can then require them to hook up, or if the sewers fail, you can, I mean, septic fail, you can also require them to do that. Same authority PSA currently has.
I'm sorry, Marty, just for clarification purposes, that was back to something else you said about taking on their liabilities now.
Right.
All the monies from the PSA would be held separately.
Correct. Everything's put in a.
Establishes an enterprise fund.
Enterprise fund that's run on.
Okay. So we're not combining debts or anything like that?
No, in any of the debt, even though it'd be then put in the county's name, it'll be a limited liability, meaning the only thing you're required to do is apply the money you collect from the water and sewer people toward those debts, and that's it. The county general fund would not be liable at all for that, in a legal standpoint.
And just to clarify, the PSA has the current authority that if Chris Tuck decides to create a subdivision in an R residential, you could make me hook up at this point in time. The PSA could force it.
They had that authority under the?
The PSA.
Yeah, under the authority legislation in the state.
And the PSA debt does not go against the county's?
Debt.
Debt when we're trying to do projects and that kind of thing?
No.
Just to clarify that.
And the PSA employees would then become county employees in transition.
Mr. Attorney, the PSA currently have a number of agreements and contracts and things signed by the PSA. Would the Board have to renegotiate those debts, or how would that process take place?
Yeah, that's a good point. We'd have to approach those by work on getting the county put in as the contracting party, instead of the PSA. Whether we have to renegotiate those depends on what the agreements say. If the agreement has, where the PSA can assign their rights, then they could do that to us without having to renegotiate. So it's just going to have to deal with each one of those on a case-by-case. I'm not sure how many there are. I asked Bob to check, and he's supposed to get back with how many there are. As for the water authority agreement, we've already put language in place in the water purchase agreement whereby the PSA then became a county department, then they would, there's no problem changing all that within the water purchase agreement. PSA's not a party to the water authority, but they are a party to the water purchase.
Okay, the same thing. I think we took out a loan or something, the PSA took out a loan or something, and I guess it's several hundred thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken. And would that, if we go to the lending institution and say we're going to assume this pliability, do the lending institution have to renegotiate, or can they just change a few things?
I'm not sure. We'll have to talk with them. If you remember, not too long ago, the PSA refinanced everything and put it in one note. I mean, actually, the county would be stepping in and it'd be the same liabilities, meaning the money that's collected through the system is being pledged to pay those debts. So none of that would change. But that needs to be taken, that's part of winding down and changing over that would take place and it could, that's why part of the time period would be getting all that figured out.
Mr. Creed.
Yeah, I've got to make sure that I say this because it could be a problem and it could not, I don't know. But when we got the letters back from the people who we asked that supposedly know more than about this than what we know, might know, experts on the subject, there was a word that I don't like to see in something when you're looking for answers. And the word is "may." And what they said was that it may not, "may not," rather than using "will not." Lot of difference between "may" and "will." And the letters were consistently saying, the ones that we got to look at, were saying that it may not affect. And I'm all for putting the water authority in the hands of the county, but I'd like to know whether those "may's" are really just "may's" or are they "will." And I'd like to know the difference in it.
You're talking about to what grants or along those lines, right?
It says, when you borrow money, you know, it said the county may not be influenced, it may not be something that's influenced by it. But never says that it will and it never says that it won't. It says it just may. So before, I think anybody should vote on anything down the road is we need to know exactly what the difference between the "may" and the "will" in that sentence that's in there.
I think there's, I'm looking at the email right now, Mr. Creed, and I think there's a little bit of difference about what's going on because Mr. Hilt, who is with the Department of Agriculture, USDA, says, quote, "I really don't think that it will make any difference who our applicant would be on the project," referring to either to the PSA or the county department. The "may" comes in on whether we as a department, as a county department or as PSA, would be willing to structure our debt in a certain manner. And what he's saying is this "may" or "may not" appeal to the county to do this, but it's really up to us. It doesn't apply to the application or eligibility to the loans themselves. This is the email I'm looking at. When was it sent here? Step of 13th from...
And you just brought up, you brought up another one of those words right there. You don't think, really don't think, you know, exactly what does that mean?
It means probably not.
Probably, huh? And probably, are we gonna do something with a "probably"?
I think that's the best we can know. Since we can't know the future 100%, we gotta go on what we can know. And we have now from the USDA, a representative of the USDA, that he didn't, he doesn't think it will affect our eligibility for grants. And that's the best we can know.
I just thought we should have a better answer. It don't seem like we got it.
I guess from my perspective, until we get that approval from the legislature, I think it would be too early because if we voted to dissolve and then we don't have that approval, obviously, we're not gonna do in a work session, obviously, it's not happening tonight.
Right.
But until that piece of legislation goes through, it's a no-brainer to me that we don't abolish the PSA. I mean, that just doesn't make any sense to me because I am aware of the emails. One of the things that Doug Morris talked to me about is there's these folks who are on private water systems and they're failing and they're looking for the county to help them and they're miles away from any public water source that we can get to them. And there's no practical way for us to take over those private sources. And the thoughts of us losing that ability to force people on there. And when we start looking at the hookup fees, they're expensive, they're not inexpensive. And Huckleberry Ridge generated quite a, right as it goes, amount of revenue for those hookup fees that were there. And if we didn't have that in place, maybe Huckleberry Ridge, if it was already zoned, would say, you know, we can save a lot of money by drilling three wells, four wells, providing it and onsite septic, and then we don't have to pay that, all those hookup fees. And so that's where my concern is. And it's from listening to other board members who came before me saying, "This is a problem and I don't want to cause a problem, I want to try to solve them." And so until the legislature meets, the governor approves it, which is gonna be July, I would not be wanting to move forward on it.
But it is some things that staff can start moving on, but just not implementing. They could A, B, C, and D. And for us as a board to be clear and staff as a board to be clear on how we want to proceed and how we want them to report back to us on the progress.
I just, I'd be a little concerned about taking staff time to do something that we might not be able to do, or at least in my opinion, not be able to follow through. That if I'm gonna have Marty spend 20 hours on this project and then we turn around and we find out in March that it didn't get through, maybe it is, maybe it's gonna be an easy no-brainer and it may sail through and no problems or it may not, I don't know.
Are you saying that we're just then, in holding until about March till we find out whether...
I would think that would be a wise choice of our staff's time, but I'm all ears to staff. I mean, if y'all want to start proceeding forward. And, but at the same time, to me, it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. But I'm willing to discuss it, whether the process of starting that process.
What does...
There's probably enough little things...
That's what I'm talking about.
That you can do to get ready.
I was gonna say.
Doesn't really flop it all over there at one time, you know, but...
It's a lot of legal questions that Marty needs to look at as far as the documents with the agreements and whatnot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things. One, you'll know by, you'll probably know by January or February whether there's gonna be any problem getting that authority because, well, we may even know in December if the legislators say, no, the way the atmosphere at Richmond is, we can't get that through for some reason. So we'll know definitely by February or early March, but it won't go into effect, is all I want.
Right.
The other thing is, I think two things you work on. One, you work on getting, talking to those parties in those agreements and seeing whether that's gonna be a problem. Try to get that worked out, not finalized, but worked out. And then I think the other issue that Craig would do is how are you gonna figure out, you know, how's that new department gonna work and fit into the scheme? So you gotta start thinking about that as well, so.
So there are some things that staff...
Yeah, a little wasting time.
Right.
And then we'll know in February whether that authority, I think, is gonna come in or not.
I just want, I would be clear that, on how we plan to proceed and what expectations are.
Sorry. No, I'm just wondering if there's consensus then among the board to that if this power is granted, that this is a direction that the board wants to move.
Well, one of the things that, when I spoke with Jim this evening, he asked us not to make a decision on this because it affects so many of his residents. So I'd rather not ask for a consensus. You know, obviously, he's been in the hospital last week. He may go back to the hospital, I hope not, but he's a very sick individual. And one thing he did ask was if we would not make a formal decision in whether it's a consensus, I would ask that we at least wait a couple of weeks to give him a chance to come back. Because it does really affect a lot of people in his district.
I don't, I don't think it's too much to ask if we want the staff to continue to investigate that, if the six members here, or the seven, decide to move forward with that. I mean, we're not voting on anything.
Right.
You know, we're in work session here and I don't think anybody, I'm certainly not planning on bringing it up on the board to vote on or anything like that. I just wanna know if there's a will behind to support the staff in making, in at least starting the process of thinking about these things.
I agree. I agree. What's Matt?
I'd like, I'd just bring something else up a little bit. I'd like for us to find some way of spreading the cost.
What do you mean, spreading the cost?
Spreading the cost of water for the county. You know, we've got 27, 2800 people that are gonna pay for every dollar this county spends on water.
Well, every penny that they spend on them for water.
No, they already have water. The ones that are gonna pay are the ones that's got water right now. They've got water, they paid their hookup fees, they've done everything they're supposed to do. But they're the ones that gonna be paying for every nickel that's spent out there.
Correct.
And if, the way it's set up right now, that's what'll happen.
They have to do it, too.
No, they don't have to do it.
Well, that's where we've gotta have, as we improve and expand the system, we've gotta grow the customer base, too.
That's right.
Well, you're gonna grow some customer base, but even then, you know...
That's what he's asking.
Is somebody, if you drive in a car that's a rental and you're making payments on it every month, but they gonna take it away from you if you don't pay your payments.
And the payments go away.
And these people out here are using the water, are we gonna take it away from them when they say, hey, we paid all we can pay? And I just don't, I don't think that, I don't think you owe it to your citizens to have less than 3,000 of them completely paid for a million dollar water system, or $2 million dollar water system, or $3 million dollar water system. And to me, that's not fair. And I certainly, above everything else, I think we should be fair to all the citizens.
But it wouldn't be fair to ask the town of Blacksburg to pay for their water expansion as well as expansion outside of their jurisdiction, or the town of Christianburg.
No, and that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that a lot of people in the county, I'm one of them, that don't use that water. But all the people in the county that don't have water, if it's gonna come to them, then they should have to pay something.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, but when is it, when is it gonna come to them, Gary? I mean, I could, see the area where I live in, that might be PSA water out there in the next 35 or 40 years. And I wouldn't want to see my neighbors and things paying for something they didn't have access to.
Okay, but what about, what if your people had, the people where you live had water, would it be fair to ask them to go 10, 15 miles away and start paying for all that water?
They're still, they're paying, they're paying for the services that they are receiving. I mean, to me, when, is it fair for an electric power company to keep charging me for power? When they putting lines over here and lines over there? I figure maybe I paid all that I need to pay. But no, it's the same thing with water, it's a utility.
But everybody pays for electricity.
Everybody pays for it.
Everybody.
Only what you use.
Only what you use. But water, when you look at the size of Montgomery County and you look at the citizen base that's out there and...
What's he talking about?
I mean, if you're gonna tackle $4, $5 to each resident, and the first thing, when you tack it on, when can I expect water in my area? Well, probably the next 50 or 75 years. Well, you can have me on the ship.
So if, but if they were bringing water to you, this is just a scenario.
Somewhere close, yeah.
If they were bringing water to the area that we were just talking about, would it be fair for you to say, okay, this is what your water base is, but you're gonna have to pay because we're gonna run water all over this county, your amount's gonna be more? Would you like to say that?
Whereas, there's two different situations that I see, Mr. Creed. I see maybe a 20 mile, a 20 square mile town that's heavily populated where you get your customer base here and there. Then I see houses in the county that may be a mile apart. So you're gonna run a water line from this house, a mile down the road to get this customer, and then another mile down the road to get another customer. I can see some issues with that.
But you're not gonna do that. If you go within a mile of somebody, if they want water, you're gonna make them pay all of what it takes to get that water out there. And then, once they pay all of that and they get to a rate, then they gotta pay for everybody else's water that's only to, that's gonna get them.
I think they have to pay to maintain the system. I mean, it's just like, maintenance, just like to me, we build a new school and pay for that school. Well, we shouldn't pay no more money for buildings, for the schools. Well, we just build a new building. But it has to be some sort of upkeep and maintenance to the water system. Water lines were out, pumps were out and things like this, so it's a maintenance issue.
I'd a lot of agree with that. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about what they pay that they don't get nothing for.
We're not? What's he talking about? Bill, Mary?
I think, I think, Mr. Creed, she's trying to understand, I think you're...
Mary wants to talk, please.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Mary.
Well, I thought we were talking about looking at the PSA becoming part of the county. No, this is a whole separate discussion on the, what, where the discussion's gone. Not that's a bad thing, but I just wanted to say that I support, you know, going ahead and looking at, you know, what could be with PSA being a county department. And I also agree that, you know, we can, Mr. Bliss will be coming back in a couple weeks and that's fine. And I don't think any big thing is gonna be found out in a couple of weeks, but I just wanted to state that I support, you know, going ahead and looking at things and getting things organized to send to the General Assembly. That's where I am.
And I agree with that. I don't have any problem with us looking at that, but I still think that somehow it's just not really fair when you have people pay, right now, they're paying what in the top two or three amounts for water in the whole state? You know, that's getting on up there. That's pretty bad.
I'll tell you, my water bill this month was $73.
As far as, I understand what Matt's saying about consensus, but I think it would be easy, very easy for us to take care of that in two weeks. Maybe, and Jim thinks outside the box a lot, and he may come up with a couple of different approaches, may come up with a point that nobody's thought about that's on this board. And so I'm not saying that I don't want the staff to take a look at some different things and maybe come up with some little progress there, but to put it over and then, I don't wanna see staff put a lot of time into it until we find out about the legislator. And maybe it's, makes that decision and the governor approves it.
Okay, we got, okay.
No, somebody's got to write the message to go to the legislator. And you may as well get started on that.
It's in our legislative priorities.
Yeah, that's gonna go to our discussion when we talk to the General Assembly members, so we need to be on the bomb ready.
Yeah.
We got Matt, Mary, and... As far as consensus, too.
Yeah, I want to do it.
You want to do it?
I guess I'm not, tonight, I'm a no.
Yeah, yeah. You'll know the rest.
Or in two weeks, because I gave Jim my word and I planned on standing by.
Okay. Well, is it any other items to discuss under this work session or can we go out of work session?
How many consensus?
So moved, need a second?
Second.
Second, have a motion, a second to return to regular meeting out of this work session. Please call roll.
Mr. Tuck.
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Mr. Creed.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Ms. Fitz.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Now, it's time for the county attorney's report.
One brief, I just wanted to let the board know, we're working on with GIS on creating a proposed on-campus voting precinct tech. And that would be, the way we would see it, it'd be the new E3 and the existing E3 would be absorbed in the E2 and E1, that's the way to do it. way to do it, but we should be coming back to you, hope before the end of the year is our goal, to have a work session and show it and get your blessing, and then also we'll be working with Sherwood Wilson on making sure tech's good with it. Preliminary, they are.
They are.
The idea.
So far, yeah.
And so, maybe, probably I'd say sometime in November, we'll be back with some type of map, or, but GIS is currently working on it and getting maybe something later this week or next week.
Is that it?
Can I just ask a question about that, Marnie? Like, the energy from this, this came from the Student Government Association?
Yeah, that's my understanding. All of a sudden, they were like, there was a go from tech's perspective to...
The president of the Student Government Association, I spoke to Dr. Wilson last week, and the president of the Student Government Association's been very persistent, and he's gotten Dr. Steger's attention, and therefore that's got everybody else's attention, so...
And the one rule we're working by is that only on-campus housing is being put in this precinct, and so, so far it's working.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay, county administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just three quick items tonight. As we heard at the last meeting from Steve Sandy, moving on to new opportunities and adventures, we have an ad that was in this past Sunday's paper for planning director, and we're going to be aggressively working to fill that position as quickly as possible. You're also, in the next couple of weeks, going to see an ad for a stormwater engineering position as well, as we heard from the work session on stormwater, we've got plenty of opportunities there as well, so we'll be bringing some folks on, hopefully in the next couple of months to address that. You probably also saw in the paper the coverage on the new Moss Center for the Arts at Virginia Tech. The ribbon cutting for that event is Friday at 10:00 a.m. for that facility, and that'll be a wonderful addition to the community, and I think that's going to do as much for tourism as some of the other initiatives we've been working on. Also, just wanted to remind you that we do have a work session scheduled prior to the PSA meeting next Monday, November 4th, at 6:00 p.m., and the subject of that work session will be to review the fiscal results for June 30, 2013. So, look forward to talking to you next Monday night about that, and that's all I have.
Sorry, Mr. Meadows, the work session will be in this room?
No, sir, it'll be in Moss Center too.
Thank you.
The work session, is there any way that we can have, will that be videotaped in there as well?
It can be, if that's a consensus of the board to do that.
I do like having our board meetings out there, so if people can't be here, they can look at them if it's possible without, I mean, I'd be happy to meet here, but...
Well, we can.
If that would be easier for Josh or staff.
Well, if it's a desire to videotape it, it would be easier in here.
Could we just have a PSA meeting here as well? That would be up to the PSA board chair.
Yes, unless you want to move. Yeah, we can just...
Unless you get tired of being in here.
Do it all here, if you want, if that's fine with you all.
Might be easier for staff.
Yeah, we can take care of that.
That it, Mr. Meadows? Okay, Supervisor Biggs, you have the floor.
Okay, just a couple things. On the stormwater management, I think, you know, we're going to have to do a lot of education, because I had people today that are Blacksburg residents asking me why they were going to have to pay a fee, and if so, what was it, and why did all this happen? And so, I was trying to explain, you know, how it happened, so that was within the town of Blacksburg, so I think a lot of people are just now catching on because they have seen or heard that fees are going to be put on, and so they're just not sure why, so we're probably going to need to do an education piece on that. And then, the only other thing is, when I went to the New River Valley Community Services Board meeting last Thursday night, we do have our strategic five-year plan, and I didn't know, I know we have so much paper and everything, I didn't know if you all wanted me to give this to Mr. Meadows to somehow scan into our drop boxes, or if you would prefer, like, if you just, you ever want to read it, I have a copy, I didn't know what would be best. So, I do have my own copy, so whatever you guys think, if you're interested in, I've got it. Whatever you all want to do, I'm fine with it.
It's not difficult to scan it in.
Or I would just ask if the Community Service Board, I would almost guarantee you they've got a digital version somewhere, if they could email...
Yeah, okay, I'll take that back. They might put it on their web, I just don't think they've had a website, they haven't, we just got it, but on Thursday, so I don't know if it's up there yet.
I would think they, I would think they already have it somewhere.
If they've got a digital copy, I agree, we could send the link to them. That'd be great.
All righty, thanks.
That it, Mary? Mr. Tuck?
Well, just about every morning, I have breakfast with my father. He keeps reading about all this, the stormwater and all these things, and he, whether he's heard it someplace else or not, he keeps saying, you're going to put that rain tax on me, aren't you?
Rain tax.
And I've asked this board to pass a resolution to ask our legislature, and legislators, and our congressmen, and our senators, where's the money going? What is this money going to be used for that we're going to be taking through? In many ways, we're a pass-through.
We are.
We're taking money from our citizens, and we're giving it up the chain, and I'd just like to know how it's being spent. So, rather than staff spending time, I'd like to send a letter to Morgan Griffith, our congressman, and then two letters from the board to each one of our U.S. senators, and then one to each one of our House of Delegates and senators who have, I guess, if Mr. Puckett still has got a little slice of Montgomery County, I can't remember if you districted, but make sure all of our senators are covered, and ask to know, where is the money going? What is it going to be spent on? And so, that way, we'll have good information to be able to give it back to our citizens, because right now, I don't know how that money's going to be spent, but it does seem like a lot of money. When you start talking about each household in Blacksburg is going to be facing $6 per month, and each commercial venture, that's $70 per month, and those are averages, is my understanding.
Blacksburg's could be higher.
I know some are going to be higher. That's a lot of money, when you start talking about 93,000 people that live in Montgomery County with a lot of different commercial pieces of property. So, I'd simply, rather than have our staff do it, I believe, since they're getting the biggest chunk of the money, they ought to explain to us where the money's being spent. And that's all I have to report.
Well, and we can, we can certainly add that as a topic of discussion when we have our legislative meeting with them in a couple of weeks.
Since it is a lot of, part of it is a federal mandate.
It is.
Would it be all right, is there a second to send a letter to Congressman Griffith?
A second, that. He could send it to two senators.
And the two senators.
And, yes, yes, yes.
I think, I mean, could we just do that by consensus?
Yes.
We'd do it by consensus.
Yes, 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 yes.
Be glad to take care of that.
Come do a work session.
Okay. Mr. Gabriel?
Yeah, just two brief things. One, a few meetings ago, I'd asked staff just to start gathering a little bit of information about maternity leave, and perhaps adding that benefit for employees, and so, maybe just at a future meeting, it doesn't have to be next meeting, just sometime, just a little update on that would be appreciated. And the second thing is, when I was getting out of the car, I should have, since Chris had an anecdote, I'll have an anecdote too, is I was getting out of the car to come in here, there's a county vehicle sitting right next to me, and I got out of the car and I stared straight at our seal, our county seal, and it's a fine seal, but it seems very dated to me, and I'm wondering if it might be time to just think about updating it, giving it something a little more modern look, especially now that we have a new tourism initiative and things like that, is to think about kind of an overall branding strategy that would kind of showcase the new Montgomery County, you know, something that, not Montgomery County, what it was in, I would assume 1976, when that seal was created, but what, 24, 47 years ago?
No, 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 30.
30, 37 years ago, so, I'm a history nut, Matt. So, I was wondering if maybe at some point, we could, we could think about this, and there's a lot of ways we could do this, we could open it up to the community, we could try to solicit design inputs, you know, we could get students to, you know, kids in the elementary schools to design, you know, like, do a whole thing around this as kind of a community engagement project, so...
I only have one, and this is the tightwad nature in me, I think of all the patches on every one of the sheriff's deputies that they have, all their uniforms, I think about all the things that got that seal. It makes me cringe when I start thinking about how much that may cost.
But you phase it out, so when you knew your uniform...
When I was in private industry, long time ago now, when our corporate seal changed, we phased it in over three years, and that's what you have to do.
Yeah.
That's right.
Are you talking about just the seal or the motto, freedom increases response?
No, just the seal, just the actual...
I really like the motto, I think, I always liked that, because like, I can explain it to my third graders.
No, they're separate things, and I'm just thinking, I mean, yeah. I don't know, I mean, it was just, it was a thought, I think...
I think it's a good thought.
There's an opportunity there, I think, to do something interesting, and it could, you know, maybe we could talk about it a little bit more and see what happens, or maybe, you know, we could think about it.
We can kick some ideas around, and then, one thing I did not mention at all, because I'm not ready to start asking for dates, I would like for us to consider a board retreat early in 2014 to start talking about some issues, and we can certainly have that on our list, is some ideas on this.
And maybe, you know, it'd be good to, for our website, you know, when we finally hire that person, to revamp and update our website and give us a better social media and web presence, bring us into the 21st century, finally, so, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I guess I have to see who's next, no, no, I thought the machine went dead. It only went sideways, though. Well, who's next?
Supervisor Creed.
Creed.
Mr. Creed.
I'll help you out till you get back to it.
I only have one thing to answer, question. We had the hearing on the Ellis Creek Road abandonment, is that going to be scheduled for our first meeting in November?
It's scheduled November 26, I believe.
November the 26?
Yes.
Is that what I did?
That's what's, it's in the resolution. It'll be in March.
I was thinking, last meeting we said we was going to have it, if I'm not mistaken, first week in November, because that's what I put out, I know, so I don't know what's... Is that, do we have more than one meeting in November?
Yeah, there's Wednesday, November 13, and then there's Monday...
25.
25. November.
So, all the owners of land that touched that, get a letter in, you know?
And it's all one owner, I believe.
Yeah, that's all one owner, but there's owners on the backside of what, that, you know, somewhere there's another owner. It's not tied into where they use that road, but, you know, the other side of the mountain below somebody else.
Me?
Yeah, your turn.
Okay, Thursday, I went to the MPO mount meeting in Roanoke. They are, or they have begun a study of public transportation, particularly in Roanoke, Roanoke County. But, there are people on that MPO from parts of Bartlett and also from...
Parts of Franklin, too.
Yes, and parts of Montgomery County, which is the Ellison part. So, I asked them if at any point they were ready to go beyond their borders. They actually sent some, a survey that they had done, and I think they said maybe to 29 people in all of Ellison. I don't know what they did, I don't know how many they sent out, but that's how many they got back. So, there was, that engendered a great discussion, a long discussion, and I'm not quite sure what the original, what the answer really is, but it's more in the vein of, well, it's probably not very cost-effective, we didn't have, we don't know how many riders we'd have, et cetera. But, since this new development will be going in, and we have voted on that tonight, I would think that that might create some more ridership. As you know, we had at one point in time, the smartway bus stopped there, but they found that there weren't enough riders there to make it viable to have that, so, anyway, we had that very good discussion about maybe they might look into this to see where the whole business would go as far as public transit is concerned. We know that here in Montgomery County, we have the Blacksburg-Christiansburg public transit, we know we have lots of agencies that take people, for instance, to Roanoke, to the doctor, or to Salem, to Vistar, or to the doctor. There are a lot of people who just want to go to Salem to do different things, so, what we're talking about is whether or not part of their study would be to see what it would be to branch out. So, I think I need to make certain that they understand that there's going to be a development down there, and a potential of some riderships there. And just before we left the meeting, word was given that VDOT had just approved $200,000 for the study of the intermodal, and this time, it doesn't say anywhere except Montgomery County, Ellison, so, I have no idea if it means that that's where they're going to discuss it and determine the economic development impact, or does it mean that they were going to look at just...
Well, that's actually a good thing, because I've had considerable discussion with my counterparts to the east, that if that MPO was going to do a study, it should be a study of the feasibility of an intermodal facility, not the intermodal facility in Ellison, because...
Well, I thought it was "and" on the first time when we went around, but it's now Ellison.
Oh, it's specific.
Well, Montgomery County, Ellison.
Okay, well, never mind.
So, you might want to talk to Wayne Strickland about that, too, and see where we are, and the person who's now chair is not Richard Flo anymore, it's Mr. Martin from Bartlett, is it? Billy Martin?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, you might want to talk, be sure you get some information, too.
Is that the railroad talking, or is that...
No.
That's the MPO.
That's right.
It's the MPO talking.
Yeah, it's the whole MPO doing it.
You know, there's lots of little things running out there, last I heard was, they were back to looking at Dublin, at the bag black, so, up there, so...
Well, Mr. Strickland said to me in the very beginning that the MPO had no desire to talk about it being just in Ellison, you know, they weren't going, they were not a part of the letter that was sent to us, or any of those things, so, I don't know, but I picked, that just hit my ears, and so, sometimes, maybe I just got a little too tempted to think that they were talking about one place. We also had, I had a very good meeting the other night at the PDC, I have some papers of which I'm going to give Mr. Meadows to, maybe, or someone, Judy maybe, to just scan in for us, but they had, we had a representative from the New River Community Action, and they are trying to find out where all the sources of social work, help, et cetera, for citizens are in the New River Valley, for those people that are part of the PDC, and so, they're working on that, but, a sheet was given to us with all telephone numbers, all names, all people to contact, probably, you know, Chris, you probably see this through the courts, too, as they're dealing with young people, but this was not only for young people, this is for everybody, agency on aging and a lot of things, so, I just think that by January 1, they will update it, or January 15, somewhere between the 1st and the 15th, they will update that, but nevertheless, it was a very interesting meeting, and I will try to see if I can get you some more information of what we, what we did there. So, those were two things, and as I said, the Department of Social Services, Mr. Lindsay, so, they would like to know, they did ask me Monday last week if I knew, and I did not say who or anything, I just said they would know after tonight, and... did not say who or anything, I just said they would know after tonight, and they would like to have some word on that.
Take care of that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, I guess it's down to me, two brief things, starting before last, I spent several hours on the firing range with former supervisor Doug Morris, we both qualified with our weapons, and he sends his regards to all of you, he said that, you know, he missed your friendship and everything, but he didn't miss the work and so forth, of course, I told him we had several boards and commissions that he could serve on, and then that's about the time he said, I gotta go, he was gone. The other thing, I guess my family was involved in a couple films last week, and what I wanna talk about is the excellent service that in escorting the films, one was escorted by Montgomery County and the other was escorted by the Blacksburg Police, but both of those departments done an excellent job in making sure that the family had a safe service and arrived at the cemeteries with no problems whatsoever, and even a couple people from out of town said that, oh, they don't do this back home, or whatever like this, and, but just wanna tell the sheriff that, you know, the guys were, were super, well, guys and girls, 'cause it was a girl there, too, yeah, and thank you, that was it. Do, I think we adjourned.
That's a good one.
I was gonna ask for a motion, but somebody said I had the authority just to say adjourned.
Yes, you do have the authority. You are the chair.